I think we're ready.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting on Wisbeach Town Council. If a member wishes to speak on an agenda item, he or she should indicate by raising your hand. Voting on a proposal or recommendation should also be indicated in this way. I will now invite you to confirm your attendance through a oral call. I shall read out in alphabetical order each member's surname and invite him or her to indicate by saying here that he or she is present. councillor Hill? councillor Hill, please? councillor Hill, can't hear you.
Can I suggest he's here, Mr Mayor?
Yeah, obviously you see him, that's fine. councillor Miss Hoy, please?
Present.
councillor Human?
Present.
councillor Kettering?
Present.
councillor Lean?
Present.
councillor Mall?
Present.
councillor Meakin?
Yeah.
councillor Oliver?
Yeah.
councillor Patrick?
Yeah.
councillor Mrs Pethilavna?
Here.
councillor Prest?
Yeah.
councillor Rackley?
Here.
councillor Tibbs? No? Here, councillor Tierney?
Present.
councillor Topgood?
Yeah.
And councillor Mrs Volvo?
Here.
Thank you. When it comes to the voting on a proposition, any councillor who is attendance at the meeting but not visible via the video conference system will be asked by the clerk on each occasion that a vote is taken, whether the councillor had voted for against or against the proposition. Item number one, to receive members' apologies for absence. I invite the clerk to report, please.
Sorry, bit too keen. Thank you, chairman, I've received no apologies for absence. The only missing councillor at the moment is councillor Tibbs, I've heard nothing from councillor Tibbs. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Item number two, open forum public participation. In normal circumstances, members of the public will have the opportunity to make an oral presentation to the meeting in public. As this opportunity does not currently exist, members of the public are invited to submit the text of their presentation in writing to the town clerk. Prior to the meeting, any representation received will be read out by the clerk. I invite the clerk to read out any writing representation that he has received from members of the public, please.
Thank you, chairman, I have received no representations on this occasion.
Okay, thank you. Item number three, to receive members' declaration of disclosing pecuniary, non-disclosing pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest in relation to any agenda item. I invite members to declare any interests that they have in relation to any of the items on this agenda. When declaring interests, please, the nature of the interest, please. Any declarations? No, thank you. Item number four, access to the employment A2E project. I would like to welcome Hannah Delgarn, the Access to Employment Manager at the YMCA Trinity Group, to give a presentation to the council in respect of this project. Please, Hannah?
Hello, everybody, thank you, thank you for having me this evening. So, I would like to talk to you all about the project that we're delivering at the moment in Wisbeach. I have prepared a presentation for you, just to kind of go through what we're offering at the moment and how I hope that you would be able to support me. I'm going to try and share my screen. Hold on, oh. This, Terry, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Steve's hosting the meeting.
Oh, hello, Steve, please may I be able to share my screen? Thank you.
Hopefully that will work now.
Okay, hold on, let me try again. Okay, from beginning. Okay, so the project that I deliver is called Access to Employment. We began back in 2013, where we were delivering in Cambridge, and we support people on their journey back to employment, education or training. Since then, we've been lucky enough to work in Peterborough, Kings Lynn and West Norfolk for various contracts and different funders, and now we are luckily enough to be delivering in Wisbeach through the CLLD Fund. This is really good for me because I'm local to Wisbeach, so I feel grateful to be able to work in my community, so I really do have a passion to kind of deliver what we've set out to do. So we help people on their journey back to work, which can include anything really, CV writing, job searching, barrier busting, we do interview techniques, mock interviews, I also look out for local job opportunities as well and try and source ones directly for my clients. We're also lucky enough to have access to funding for qualifications if people need a CSCS card or their English and maths, we're able to supply that, and also kind of supporting people in dressing for a job interview on a budget. So we started in Wisbeach in September, so once we were up and running, we were then able to engage with people from November. So since then, even battling all the lockdowns, we've managed to engage with 25 people who are looking for work, we've applied for over 40 job opportunities with our clients, and we have written 20 CVs. We've also seen four people secure job offers, which is amazing for us, especially in the current climate and the kind of clients that we're working with as well, because a lot of them are further away from the labour market, so we're really, really pleased to be able to have done that so far, and especially as well for most of it being from home. So, supporting our community, throughout Covid-19, we have adapted our delivery approach to carry on supporting our clients and helping them back to work. We're able to use different platforms to engage online, and when restrictions are eased, we're able to offer distance one-to-one sessions. I think that it's important as well to be able to kind of make the client comfortable, so where Zoom and MS Teams may frighten some people, we're also able to kind of chat on WhatsApp, video calls, Messenger, whatever makes them feel comfortable, and also whatever can kind of keep our engagement as well. This picture was in January, just before I'd mentioned that. In Wisbeach, our contract required us to source match funding to go along with what we were receiving, and something that was really important to me was to allow people to understand that it's not just as easy as getting a job tomorrow and starting tomorrow. I think it's really important to understand that sustaining a job is really important, so whereas you could perhaps get a job tomorrow, that doesn't mean that that person is going to be in it in the next week. So I wanted to be able to go back and kind of look at barriers that people may struggle with, so part of our match funding, we're able to secure different professionals offering our clients free services. So from that, we've got a professional hypnotherapist, which offers free sessions around mental health, pain, anxieties and depression, so she does specific sessions for that. We have councillors on board as well, life coaches, and we also have a hairdresser offering free haircuts for job interviews or starting work, and also free childcare places. I wanted to be able to offer opportunities that people may not ever get the chance to take, and to bring down barriers that are kind of more holistic and innovative, and makes us different from other providers. So in Wisbeach, we are funded by COLD up until December 2022, after extension from DWP. We are looking for a longer-term funding plan and a way that we can gain a sustainable income stream to support the longevity of our project. I want to be able to be in Wisbeach and people know to come to Access to Employment and partnership work with other agencies as well to kind of complement everything else that's going on in the town. I wanted to talk about a case study here. So despite constantly changing restrictions and guidelines, we have continued to work hard with our clients and help them bring down barriers to get back to employment. Owen had been out of work for 10 years, but with our help and support, landed himself the job of his dreams. Owen had a lot of confidence issues, and whilst he had really good skills, he couldn't see how they could transfer into the workplace. So after working with us for a while, we kind of brought that out of him and talked about all of what he does, his customer service and timekeeping skills and organising people. So we managed to secure him a job working at Genesis Housing in Kings Lynn. So you can see here what he'd said, "Working with Hannah at the YMCA has given me the confidence to apply for work again and made me believe in myself after being out of work for 10 years. Always there to give advice and excited to start this position. Not only is this a job, but a career and something that I had wanted to do for a long time, thank you so much." And that's where I go back and talking about helping people get jobs that they're going to sustain, so whether that be a little bit longer to get that job, at least they're not going to fall out of it and kind of take themselves back a few steps like that. So, Access to Employment and the Future. During our work in Wisbeach, we've been fortunate to be supported by advice and guidance from councillor Hoy, thank you, and Fennan District Council. What I'm hoping to ask from you all tonight is support in helping us look for future funding opportunities, to carry on the support we have given to the community and develop it into a sustainable project, but also to refer any clients, you or your organisations or people you know, who may need help back to work so that we can support them and take them through their journey. Thank you. Okay, that's me, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Do I have any questions from members or comments, please? councillor Human, please?
Hello.
Good evening, Hannah, thank you for a wonderful presentation. Can I talk about budgets of your 25 people, you've got employment for four? Over what period of time was that and what sort of budget was involved, please?
Sorry, can you say that again? 25 people I've engaged with so far who have come on to the service and then four have found work so far?
Yep. What budget was involved and over what period of time was that program?
So we are, we have been funded for £30,000 for the year, but we also have to match fund half of that as well, which is where the hypnotherapy comes in, and we also have a bank of volunteers as well who have given their time, which all goes towards it.
Right, so you put £15,000 in and it was £15,000 matched funded, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you so much, and I wish you all the very best for the future, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
councillor Hoy, please?
Yeah, can you just talk to councillors about, because one thing I found really inspiring when I met you was about, often when I've met people wanting to do projects, they're a bit airy-fairy and kind of like bureaucratic, I suppose, and you read like a 30-page document of all these different outcomes, and then you think, what is it actually fixed and like, who's actually helped? And you like spoke about some real practical things that you actually do to help people, and I just wondered if maybe you could share those a little bit, like you're talking about, we had a talk about like the interview tips and the clothing and things like that.
Yeah, so we've been lucky enough to win short contracts, so we've been able to develop our own kind of programmes. So, for example, not last year, the year before, we won a project working with single parents in Peterborough, so we'd have a cohort of single parents, and it's kind of what I was saying about going back to how they feel, step into their shoes, you know, they're going to be stressing about childcare, they're going to be worried about, oh my gosh, if I get a job, how am I going to get dinner in the oven and get everybody fed? So there's lots of other things I wanted to approach to make sure that we had the whole thing covered, so yeah, let's get a job, but then also let's do the groundwork as well to make sure that your family life is going to be happy and secure. So we did a, my ladies, oh my goodness, they were like, I can't go to work, I've not worked for 10 years, and it's about drawing out their skills as well, about what will transfer into the workplace, so you've got, you know, timekeeping, keeping a budget, making sure people are going to school on time, managing challenging behaviour, and all of those things go into work. So they'd also never had interviews as well, so we were able to arrange a mock interview like speed dating, but with interviews, so not as exciting, where they would go all around the room, they'd have two minutes each, and we had employers come in who had vacancies, so we were able to kind of prepare them and get them ready. I just want to do stuff that I think I would have appreciated, and kind of thinking outside the box and not just sitting at a computer all day looking for work, because that is boring. That's where I'm at, Sam. councillor Hoy.
Thank you, and just on that, if I might, ma'am, just another quick point, you mentioned about funding, but often we have this, and this is kind of a bit my fault, perhaps not giving you a bit more information beforehand, because we often have people come and say, this is kind of what I do, and you know, I'm looking for support and funding, and I think, you know, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm pretty sure everyone's sort of supportive of what you're doing, because everyone wants more things for Wisbeach and for the residents, but in terms of funding, obviously we can't make any decisions today, A, because we haven't kind of had any notice of it, and B, we kind of don't know what you want, kind of thing, like what are you planning, how much do you need? So, and can I suggest maybe, like going forward, you have a chat with Terry and about kind of what your plans are, and Terry can talk to you about what processes we've got and things in place?
Definitely.
So if people don't say tonight, yes, we're giving you funding, don't sort of take that as a negative, it's just purely because we can't make that decision tonight.
I will definitely speak to you, please, Terry, but I think as well, it's about kind of raising awareness in the town too, because we are new to the area. I mean, I've lived here for quite a while, but delivery, we're quite new, so I think for you, for anything that you kind of hear around the grapevine or anything you can do to support, I would be grateful for, but I will also definitely speak to Terry. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Volvo, please?
Hi, Hannah, what a delightful delight your presentation was, so thank you for that.
My partner was like...
It must be absolutely awful to do this over Zoom and then have to share things, I know, I can totally sympathise with you, but you've done really, really well.
Oh, thank you.
So, the things I really liked about it was the holistic approach and the solving problem, problem-solving approach was exactly what we need in our community, it's no point in just looking to get them a job, we need to look at why they haven't got the job.
Exactly, yeah.
Long-term goals, there's no point in holding on to these people because it makes you feel warm and fuzzy, it's about building up those bridges so they can go off on their own, so yeah, hands down. The case study that you did about Owen, credit to him and credit to you guys, that is exactly the sort of thing, that long-term unemployment and that generational acceptance of unemployment is exactly kind of the thing that we kind of need to change and challenge more, so absolutely brilliant. A couple of questions, so is there any age range that you accept?
Yeah, any age range, and they can also be in work as well, because, so they don't just have to be unemployed. It's a little bit different in how outcomes are reported, but for say, for example, if somebody's in work and they're really, really unhappy, I've always thought it's easier to get a job when you're in a job, so kind of support them at that time, and you're also, you look better to an employer when you're in work too, so we do offer that support as well.
Oh, that's perfect, that was actually going to be my second question, because I do hate it when you have to be at rock bottom in order to get any support.
I know.
Yeah, that is perfect, and hopefully when all this ends, we can meet up for a coffee, because I think we could probably do with some sharing of information of local things, yeah, brilliant.
Love it. Yes, please, thank you, nice to meet you.
councillor Mall, please?
Thank you, chairman, thanks Hannah for your presentation. Couple of things I just want to raise, and sorry if I've missed any of it. Who are you reaching out to and how are you reaching out to them? And if somebody is interested or we want to refer somebody to you, how do we get in contact or how do we reach you?
Refer to me. I will share my phone number and my email address. At the moment, I've been really lucky to, with the support from Sam and the council to have kind of hooked me up and got me in touch with all of local support agencies, so I've been meeting with lots and lots of different places, so the youth support service, local housing associations, support for young people, Oasis Centre, lots and lots of places, and I've also been on the Wisbeach Village Charities group, which has been wonderful, I can't believe, I can't, I've lived here for such a long time, I had no idea all this stuff goes on, it's wonderful. So I've been very lucky to receive referrals through there as well, but I'm also trying to build a social media presence. Sometimes I just think I'm boring people, but I try, so I have had quite a few people through Facebook as well, come through. Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
councillor Lean, please?
Thanks, chair. Hi Hannah, thank you for your presentation. I'd just like to say thank you for the work that you're doing in the town and for the four people that you've got back into work, I'm sure it means everything to them as much as anything else would. I just wanted to know, are the Job Centre referring to you at all?
I have been in touch with the Job Centre, I haven't had any through as yet, but it's something I want to kind of work on and develop, so no, I haven't had any referrals through, but I have been in touch with them.
And also the College of West Anglia?
Yes, I have emailed them, I haven't had a response yet, but I have been in touch with Carl, who is going to introduce again together, so yeah, that would be my, I would love to be able to go there and to kind of, people who are due to leave, kind of get them a CV, talk about job opportunities, why to go next, because I think CVs for the young people, they really struggle with it, and I love writing a CV, so yeah, bring them all to me, it's fine.
That's lovely, thank you.
Thank you.
councillor Tierney, please?
Yes, thank you, chairman. So first of all, I would thank you for your presentation, I think that the work you're doing is important work, and from small old acorns, they say, don't they? The thing is, if someone's been out of work for a long time, I think it can be quite intimidating to try and re-enter the workforce, and I'm sure that places like the Job Centre do everything they can, and I'm sure they do their best, but I can kind of feel your enthusiasm brimming over straight away, and I'm sure that must have an effect on people who otherwise might feel like they've got no chance or they've tried a lot of times and failed, and once someone gets a job who's been out of job, worked for a long time, the wonders it can do for self-esteem and for self-confidence.
Hundred percent.
It's like a turning point, I think, in life sometimes, so long may you keep that enthusiasm and absolutely support what you're doing.
Thank you so much, I love that, thank you, yeah, it's a pleasure to do it. I've been helping people back to work for over 10 years, you wouldn't think that because I'm so young and glamorous, but I really have, and I can't think of doing anything else, I love it, and the feeling when somebody gets a job, it's the feeling you get when you pass a drive-in test, that's the way that I kind of liken it to, it's that, oh my god, so you know, somebody rang me once and said, the last one that had got a job rang me, and I screamed in Tesco's because I was so happy for them, it's brilliant, and you do just need to coach them, get their confidence up, you know, but also help them when it doesn't go right, to say, you know, this isn't the end of the world, this isn't it, we will keep going, that's where I stand with it.
Do I have any comments or questions from members? No, thank you very much Hannah for your presentation and work you do for the community, you're welcome to stay or you can...
I'm going to wrestle three children to bed, so, because I can hear them messing about, so, but thank you very much for having me, it's been a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, moving to next item number five, please. Fennan District Council, to receive information in relation to district council activities relevant to Wisbeach. I understand that there may be a matter to which the clerk wishes to draw members' attention, the item also provides the opportunity for those Wisbeach Town Councilors, who are also members of the Fennan District Council, to do likewise, please.
Thank you, chairman, I've had nothing to add in terms of the Fennan District Council item, except to remind members that they've received last week the CCTV performance data, the information in terms of section 106 expenditure, and the monthly environment newsletter, but also, as you said, chairman, there's also the opportunity for any members of this council who are also members of Fennan District Council to report any updates that they may have. Thanks, chairman.
Do you have any updates from members? No, thank you. Moving to item number six. Cambridge County Council, to receive information in relation to county council activities relevant to Wisbeach. I understand that there may be a matter to which the clerk wishes to draw members' attention, particularly to specify item on the agenda. The item also provides opportunity for those Wisbeach Town Councilors, who are also members of the Cambridge County Council, to do likewise, please.
Thank you, chairman, I was going to mention the local highway improvement scheme, but I'll say that councillor Hoy already has her hand up, unless it relates to that.
councillor Hoy, please?
No, it's not in relation to that, I can comment on that, but I'll let you, Terry, because I think, you know, I know what you're going to say on that, so I'll leave that to you, but I was just going to mention the new school, you must have all seen in the press that Brook Weston have now won the free school, and just the reason that's important, it's just a couple of things I wanted to update you on. Firstly, a few people have sort of said, oh, what's the big deal, because we were going to have the school anyway, well, the reason it's a big deal is because the government are now going to be paying for it, so if Cambridge County Council have been paying for it, they'd have had to borrow the money, they don't just have 20 million sat around, they'd have had to obviously borrow that with interest, so it's good that the county council, the government are going to be paying for that. It's also, I'm quite happy that Brook Weston were the ones that were chosen over, I can't remember the name of the other one, but if you remember, they did come and give us a presentation, the other academy trust, and I think a few of us commented that they didn't seem to sort of know a terrible amount about Wisbeach, so it's quite good that one got it, that does seem to know a lot about the local area, and also just a lot of people have been mentioning about the highways elements of it, because obviously Gads Lane, where the school's proposed, is sort of like a single-track road, the officers are very well aware of this, there's been quite a few extensive emails going back and forwards as to what's going to be done before planning, but there will be quite significant upgrades to that road before the school does open, so just to put people's minds at rest, I believe that they will be consulting on that in a not-too-distant future, but I think they have to, A, they're waiting to start to find out who's going to officially build it, because I think now that the government have given the money, I think the government can, they can build it rather than the county council, or they can ask the county council, so that needs to be ironed out, and then once that's all been ironed out, they'll obviously let people know a bit more information about the highways elements, but yeah, it's all good news really, but I just thought people might want the updates as to what's going on.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, chairman, if I go back to the local highway initiative item, members were recalled at the last meeting, they considered the feasibility assessments from the county council in relation to the two schemes that have been foot-forward, town council decided to continue with its application for the new drove scheme, which was, the cost to council was approximately £500, however, in terms of the Tinkers Drive scheme, the total cost, which was estimated at over £30,000, which meant that the town council's contribution would be around £15,000, based on the comments that councillor Tierney made and other councillors agreed with, often with schemes such as this, some people support them, some people don't support them, especially because of the high level of contribution that would be required from this council and from the county council to consult tenants who would be most likely to be affected by it. So I contacted the county council's highways team and asked for the roads, if you like, or those people who... the roads, if you like, or those people who they would consult when they carry out the scheme and they'd be consulting later on. So I wrote to 118 properties on Dean Court, Godwin Road and Tinkers Drove. As I said, they were the roads that the county council's highways team suggested. Of those 118 properties, nine responded. Seven were supportive of the scheme and two opposed the scheme. I have sent a document around which has anonymized the individual property numbers and residents, and have also indicated those who support, those who oppose, and some comments where those respondents have made them. So the situation now is based upon the responses or members' views. Otherwise, where would council like to go from here? I mean, I understand that both the applications were considered by the assessment panel, the county council, on the first of March. But I haven't heard any indications to the likely outcome of these two schemes. So what we did when I spoke with the county council, knowing that the panel meeting was coming up, we worked on the basis that it would go through the panel process because of the time scale. However, if the town council decided, whatever the result from the panel was, if it wished to withdraw, it could withdraw after that process, and then the county council would reallocate the funding to other schemes in those circumstances. So over to councillors' chair in terms of how they would now like to proceed with this LHI application.
Yep. Councillor Tierney, please.
Yes, thank you Chairman. First of all, thank you to the officers for writing to people. I normally would have done that myself, but COVID has made it difficult to hand deliver and the like, so that was really appreciated, the assistance. In regards to the panel, I did sit on that panel, but I don't know if people know the process. You're not allowed to vote on your own, things in your own area. So I didn't get to vote on this one. And we don't yet know how the votes went with the other councillors, because it's a secret process. And then officers go away, add them up and come back and tell you what has happened. We don't know that yet. So I'm hopeful about it. While Tinkers Drove, this issue on Tinkers Drove has been raised with me so many times. Now, there are issues that come up a lot when you're a councillor, but this one is certainly, certainly in the Waterleys North Hall area. This is one that I've heard many times. And people don't want a bit of signage or a bit of change of road markings. They want physical measures. And then a lot of them also say, and the road is not in a great state either, so we need some work on the road. This plan kind of kills two birds with one stone, so I like that. But with these things, we always see, don't we, that you do what you think people want, they tell you they want. And then the officers come back with a plan, and for some people, it's not what they wanted, or not what they dreamed they could have, which often is not legally allowed or isn't affordable. And for some people, they then never spoke up before, but suddenly they're really against it. I've seen this a few times, and that's why I was keen for us to engage with the residents. The number of responses we've got back from all those letters, I think, says that it's not as burning an issue as perhaps has been raised with me in the past. But still, that wasn't a terrible return, given some of the responses we get. And I think it's fairly clear, seven to two, that people were broadly supportive. I don't know if anybody's read them. But I think the responses were fairly clear that people are keen for us to do this with just a couple of exceptions. So I'd like, hopefully we'll get some support. Obviously councillor Mole is also, and councillor Ketteringham and councillor Boltsovich also applies to that area, councillor Ratley. So I'd love all of your views, but my view is we should press on if the county council is of the minds to allow us to do so.
Councillor Mole, please. Councillor Mole.
Thanks Chairman. Yeah, thank you. I was supportive when councillor Tierney brought this forward originally, and I have taken the time to agree through the responses, and yes, they are encouraging. Obviously, some people do have, well, there's a couple of concerns on there. One, with regards to an aging property, which obviously we have to take that into consideration. But in the whole, the response is good and it is much needed. The road is a through fair. It is, well, I travel down it quite a lot. It's a nightmare. There was another comment raised regarding potholes, but potholes is a major issue for across the whole county. And all I keep doing with people is just keep encouraging, keep reporting them. But yeah, I'm fully behind it. I think the responses that we've had, unfortunately, we never get many responses come through, but we have to take on board the people that have taken the time to do it. And I'm happy to support councillor Tierney, and I do actually thank him for bringing it to the table in the first place. So thank you.
Councillor Ratley, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what councillor Mole and councillor Tierney have said. I'm happy to go along with whatever people decide.
Thank you. And I'm a full supporter as well councillor Mole and councillor Tierney and councillor Tierney's application, so yeah. Any more comments from members? Councillor Warwark, please.
I was just, so I was talking to one of my residents the other day that lives down Ramnuff Road. She has real problems with cars and lorries hitting the speed bumps and causing vibrations through the house. So it is an actual real problem. So is there a way of highways checking that? And make sure they're placed not within the front of certain houses that are old? Or are we just, or is that not an issue?
Councillor Tierney, please.
Yes, thank you Chairman. So I stress I'm not an engineer or an expert, but as I understand it, some of these problems have been resolved by slight changes in design. The problems are less common if the bumps are only in the middle and don't go all the way across the road to carry the vibrations. And I think they do take care as to the placement of the bumps as well, within what they can reasonably do. Some places seem to have this problem, some places don't. As you know, there's, there are places we've actually had to remove speedhums because of this. But I tend to think that that's less common, because there are lots of roads in town where we don't have that problem. I mean, in the end, what can you do? You're either paralyzed and do nothing, or you've got to try and take some sort of action. It's difficult.
Thank you. Anybody else, any comments? Okay, thank you. Yes, councillor Tierney?
Chairman, I was just going to suggest, I mean, I'm taking it, I don't know where the other councillors are, that councillor Tierney has proposed this. It's been seconded by councillor Mole, and on that basis, I suggest that you take a vote on that basis, so we can.
Can we have a vote please, members, on councillor Tierney's proposal?
Okay, that's carried. Thank you.
Any against, please? No against, no. Thank you. Moving to agenda item seven. To confirm the signature by the chairman when possible, the minutes of the meeting of Wisbeach Town Council held on 1st of February 2021. These minutes have been circulated and members have had the opportunity to decide whether they are true or incorrect according to the last meeting of the council. I'm seeking a proposal and second, if a confirmation of the minutes, I shall make arrangement with the clerk of my signature of the minutes. Can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Human. And second was councillor Mickins. Can we have a vote, please?
That is, I believe that to be unanimous. Thank you Chairman.
Against, no, yeah. Thank you, members. Item number eight. Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Association of Local Councils. Wisbeach Town Council has been invited, as it each year, to consider becoming a member of the Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Association of Local Councils. A document setting out the services provided by CAPLC has been circulated to members by the clerk in advance of the meeting. The chief executive officer of CAPLC has offered to attend a meeting of the town council if members so wish to explain CAPLC membership offer. The cost of Wisbeach Town Council membership of CAPLC of multiple year 2021-22 is £1,817.01. Do I have any comments from the members, please? Councillor Hoy?
I'd just be, you know, clerks views on this really. I mean, I know this is, the reason we stopped being a member is a quite historic thing. So it was when we had the employment issue with the former clerk, we got some advice from Kapalk, and it actually was very bad advice. And potentially it ended us into a big, could potentially have landed us into a big financial liability purely because of their bad advice led to some actions that we took, which were not right. So I think our view has been, if we need legal advice, we'll go and see a solicitor or barrister or whatever ourselves. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I can't get too excited about it either way. You see what I mean? If everyone's particularly in favour of joining it, I'm not going to kind of stand in anyone's way.
Can I have the clerk, please, to report?
Yeah, yes. I mean, I'm very happy to respond to councillor Hoy's comments. I think she's absolutely right. I mean, obviously I joined the council at the time. The legal process was going on in terms of the former clerk's appointment or termination appointment. And councillor Miss Hoy is absolutely right. I mean, potentially the advice that came via Kapalk could have cost this council thousands of pounds for a particular issue, had that not been covered by the council's insurers at that time. I think there have also been some concerns across the county in terms of the, some of the advice that had been given to Kapalk over years, sort of leading up to that period and beyond. However, I think Kapalk have taken efforts to really improve their game. They've got a new chief executive officer that took up post, I think about six months ago, and is transforming the organisation. I mean, obviously, it would be automatically assumed, or pretty much automatically assumed, that any local council within Cambridge and Peterborough would want to be a member because Kapalk arguably represents their views and lobbies government, et cetera, on their behalf. I mean, as the chairman has already mentioned, there is the opportunity for the chief executive, the new chief executive of Kapalk. She's volunteered or offered to attend a meeting of this council and any other council to explain in more detail what Kapalk's offer is. I mean, to be completely honest, I am more of a, fan's the wrong word, but I would be happier to support council becoming a member of Kapalk at this point than I would have been in previous years. I think people are understanding what I'm saying. Members might want to take up that offer to hear from the horse's mouth, so to speak. Or alternatively, you know, decision this evening, either one way or the other, yes, to take up membership. Obviously, the cost is £1,800, which is, in terms of, if you like, of insurance, is quite expensive. However, a big proportion of that cost is actually for the membership of the National Association or affiliation to the National Association of Local Councils, rather than the work of Kapalk, the sort of the local, the local branch, if you like. But so I'm happy to answer any more questions or take any member comment back to Kapalk. Or, as I invite Penny, the new chief executive, to come to a future meeting and just talk through what they offer and possibly to answer any questions that members may have.
Thank you. Councillor Human, please.
Do we know of anybody who's had similar experiences with Kapalk? Or have they improved? Or what is the situation? Or if you've got any doubts about them, I suggest we don't pay the membership this year, but possibly invite their spokesman to speak to us during the coming year to see if we review the situation then.
Councillor Linn, please.
I'd just say we leave it. If we need advice on law, we get a solicitor. That's what they're there for.
Councillor Mole, please.
Thank you Chairman. Yeah, I'm a little bit the same way, I think. I'd like to know exactly what they can bring to the party and what actual benefits we do get from them. So I'd welcome a presentation from their new chief executive. Bearing in mind, the comments have been made, obviously, which predates my own time on this council. But surely, if we have any issues that involve our insurers, our insurers would request their own legal advice in any event, or would want their own solicitors involved. So I personally can't understand what we get from using Kapalk as an organisation. So yeah, I would welcome some more information. I certainly would welcome a presentation. And at this moment in time, I don't think I'd be happy to proceed with the payment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Warwark, please.
So, thank you Chair. I was literally just going to say exactly what Andy Mole has just said. I would like, I think it'd be good to hear the presentation. I think it's always good to, you know, find out exactly what they can offer and what they can't offer. But at this point, I'm quite interested to know exactly what they are going to offer. £1,800 is still £1,800, and we should be very careful about whatever money we give out. So yeah, I do think a presentation would be good, though.
Any more comments?
Councillor. I think I saw councillor Patrick's hand up at one point.
Oh, did he? Didn't see it. Okay. Patrick, next. Councillor Mickins, please.
Oh, okay. All I was going to do, Chairman, was make a formal proposal that we invite Kapalk to give us a presentation. But I don't know whether we need a formal. Anyway, I'm quite happy to propose it if we need one. Okay.
And councillor Patrick wanted to say something?
I was just going to say, I initially agreed with councillor Human that we invite Kapalk to come and give an explanation, and meanwhile, carry on as we are.
Do we need a proposal in a second on this case?
I think councillor Human was the first to suggest it, if you want to take that as the proposition.
Oh, make that as a proposition, yeah.
And councillor Patrick just said he supports, he would support that as a proposition, as I read it, so.
I should clarify the proposition. I'm not suggesting we pay them this year's money. I suggest, subject to a presentation, and review the situation next year.
Oh, right. Okay.
Yeah, that was my understanding, Peter.
Yep.
Can I have a vote, please, from members?
That's unanimous, Chairman. It's fun to come along, as you say, but it will not be for membership for this year, but for membership the following year if members are happy with what they hear.
Thank you. Item number nine, clerks' report. I invite the clerk to update members of project initiatives to inform the council of the correspondence and report the minutes of the meetings of the committees, et cetera.
Right. Thank you Chairman. I've managed to send out my report in advance this afternoon. Trying to find my copy. And what I propose to do is just run through it very quickly, pick out some edited highlights. And then I'm very happy to take any questions either this evening. If I can't answer them, I'll get back to the councillors concerned, or members can follow up with their questions afterwards. Members will be aware that at the last meeting of the council, we said that the delegation scheme would continue until the 23rd of March. Couple of the decisions that I'll pick out from that was the agreed to replace the door entry system at the town hall, which a number of you will realise has been faulty for a long time. So that's some work we're getting underway. Meeting between myself, councillor Oliver and Miss Hoy. We decided that we begin the Beach Day stroke rock festival joint event. So that's proposed. That's effectively a decision that would have been taken by the Community Events and Festivals Committee. That's moving on. In terms of community support, members are aware of what we're doing in terms of sending out letters to people and offering support in terms of groceries and collecting medications. And also being a listening ear for those who just need somebody to talk to. I'm also working on behalf of the council with a number of agencies. One of which is looking to try to put together a Wisbeach Action for Youth group or something similar to get, similar to get some youth activity, youth engagement in the town. We've had one meeting of potentially a sort of core group of partners, which includes the county council and Clarion Futures. We've got a second meeting, I think it's now arranged for the 24th. And also Carl Suckling from the county is working closely with this, with me, is also meeting with councillor Mrs Warwark, I think next Monday at five o'clock, so that Susan can feed into this process, so we get member engagement in terms of what's been sort of led by officers potentially at the moment. So there are other things in terms of community support that members will recall. So there are other things in terms of community support that members will recall, perhaps a year, 18 months ago, possibly even two years, it was agreed that we would lease five acres of former allotment land next to the People and Animal Site to CP Learning Trust for a community orchard. That lease has now been signed, and that project can now proceed. In terms of the market, members will be very aware that we've been in and out of lockdown, and we're currently in a lockdown which allows only essential items to be sold, or a retailer selling a majority of essential items, and they can sell others as well. We're expecting, I think it's as well as from April the 12th, that we can move out of retail lockdown, if that's a phrase. And we're looking to see what will happen with the market. We've now written to all of our traders, those who are still trading, and those who have been unable to trade, inviting them back for the 12th. We will be looking to promote the market being fully operational again, making the point in our advertising or promotion that it's safer to shop outside than it is indoors. One thing that we're looking to do, and also take some member soundings, and hopefully members will agree, but because traders will not be able to, all trades will not be able to back until at least the 12th of April, and even some of our existing licensed traders who are like, who are able to trade at the moment, aren't currently doing so because footfall across the town is down, which means that even if they're normally a licensed trader, that there's not the income. So we're allowing those not to trade on some of their contracted days because, well, to be honest, it's only fair. And we've tried to be fair with our market traders. Most, like most market operators across the country, according to NABMA, we've continued to charge, and I think some of those who have traded have still done relatively well. Some of those who haven't been able to trade have been able to access various bits of grant funding, the same as people in normal retail, if that's an appropriate phrase. And so what we're thinking about are those who do come back, who would normally be licensed traders, and under licence, it means we guarantee pitches on certain days of a certain size, and the trader guarantees to pay us whether or not they come in. So what we're looking to do is possibly not start our licensing year until something like perhaps the first of July, so the first of April. Because as I understand it, from what the government's roadmap is currently saying, is that from the 21st of June, social distancing ceases. So first of July seems like a good date to me. So that's the point at which traders should commit to fully back to the council in terms of the space that they rent from us. Obviously, if we were to think about reductions in rent, you know, to try to get traders back, obviously, that would have an impact on the council's income as it's had in the current financial year. We think our income is likely to be down about £20,000 in terms of market income in the current financial year. So that's where we are in terms of markets. But I'm happy to take any questions. Allotments, our numbers remain high, and we've still got people coming on as new tenants, which is really reassuring. And the work that we carried out to prevent fly tipping at Dalgate and Hayton Lane sites so far appears to be working, which is, which is good. I mentioned earlier in terms of community events and festivals that a joint beach day and a rock festival is now being arranged in Wisbeach Park for Sunday, the 8th of August. Planning is well underway. And also, the Wisbeach Christmas Fair Steering Group will be meeting in the next two or three weeks to begin planning for this year's event on the normal, on a normal basis. In terms of the town hall and office arrangements, as you know, we've not had public visitors to the town hall. People who do need to come into the building, such as the contractors, they have to come in a COVID-19 way, and we're also minimising their visits as well. In terms of works to the town hall, the new reconditioned stairlift was installed on the 2nd of March. So that's now in situ and working very well, and a lot more modern, a lot more efficient than the one that was taken out. We've also managed to catch up with a number of sort of routine maintenance. We've had repairs to the drainage downpipes at the town hall. Some of the internal doors have been adjusted so they now close properly. We've replaced or repaired various door locks, including the ones on the on the main door entrance itself. And as I mentioned earlier, we've now placed an order to replace the door entry system, which was agreed under delegated powers. I'll make the point, although it's not really relative to the town hall as such, but or the office itself, but as members will be aware, we've had meetings virtually now for a year. I think the last one we had in person was the 16th of, was the 16th of March last year. But the legislation which enables meetings to take place virtually, the Coronavirus Act 2020, is only in force until the 6th of May. So Capel, that we mentioned earlier, the National Branch, plus the SL, Society of Local Council Clerks, are in liaison with government in terms of what happens beyond the 6th of May. Because potentially after 6th of May, it means people have to meet in person, but obviously, there's still issues then about social distances, et cetera. So we're trying to get a steer. I think the hope is that there will be the option for people to have virtual meetings, probably not on a permanent basis, if that works for their type of organisation. Work continues at the castle, and as a result of the brochure that's been published, we've had a number of inquiries, particularly for weddings. That's all very promising. In terms of correspondence, just to report, I had a letter from the unit chair of the Wisbeach Sea Cadets thanking the council for the £1,000 donation towards new heating system at the organisation's premises. And also just to remind members that I sent around earlier today an email of thanks from Blackfield Creatives for the council's support for the Vertical Gardens project, and also to mention an online launch that they're having on the 31st of March. And then finally, I've circulated and listed the minutes of the meetings of committees since the council last council meeting. They're all meetings of the planning committee of the 1st of Feb, 15th of Feb and 1st of March. And I would ask members to note the contents of those minutes in terms of decisions made by those committees under powers delegated to them by the council. As I said, I'm happy to take any questions now, or members want to contact me subsequently. Happy for that also. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Claude. Councillor Moore, please.
Thanks, chairman. Yeah, thanks, Terry. Appreciate your report, and also I'd like to thank the staff as well for the work that you guys are doing, especially in these difficult times. I've got a couple of points and observations, and then there's a couple of questions. Do you have me to just go away through it and delve it at the end, or do you want to go point by point? What's easier for you?
Me? Do you think it was-
Yeah. Sorry, I am talking to you, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Just go for it, Andy, and we'll see what we get.
Yeah, okay. The first point, the observation I wanted to make was regarding the community support and the comments that you made in relation to the youth action group. I think that's great news, and I'm all for that. On the marketplace, following on from a conversation we had last week, I can say that I'm wholeheartedly behind the idea of deferring the trader's licence if we can, as it will give them a chance, especially those that haven't been able to trade, to get back on their feet, as it were, because like other traders, it's been quite a difficult time, and any help that we can give them, I think is only a good thing, in my opinion. There was a comment that you made regarding the marketplace enhancement, and again, and please see, that's all moving forward. We're waiting for the implementation once the legal process, what the new traffic regulations order has been concluded. Do you have a timescale for that?
No, no. Well, we haven't as yet. I mean, I think they're very, very close. And it's one of the things on my task is to sort of chase them up to see if we can get further detail. I mean, that was a comment a month ago as well. So, but that's something on my task is, we need to know where we're going with that. I think it's the legal processes, you know, that sometimes take more time than we would hope, but that's certainly something on my chase list.
Thank you. Moving on to the community events, the, it's mentioned in your report about the combined Wisbeach and Rock Festival. I must say, I do like the idea of an event, and appreciate that in order to, that we get these things moving, we have to start the planning process from early on. However, we're still in some very uncertain times, and you only have to look at what's happened elsewhere, that there is a risk we could end up back in lockdown, there is a risk we could have, the risk we could have some further tier restrictions. And I'm not trying to be negative about this in any way, shape or form. And I certainly do think that as a town, and I know I do, we just need something to look forward to, but can you let us know what precautions are being taken if we are able to, in the event that there is another lockdown or restrictions in relation to, obviously, our funding procedures?
Yeah, I think, as I say, councillor Hoy would probably be best placed to answer that in terms of the thinking behind what we're doing, why we're doing it and how we're doing it.
Councillor Hoy, please.
Yeah, thank you. So in terms of the sort of safety aspect, that's something obviously we need to discuss with the relevant authorities, really, as to what we require. And I think I've already had sort of some preliminary discussions. And their view very much at the moment is they kind of don't know, because obviously, everything's a bit up in the air. So we'll obviously have to comply with whatever rules we have to comply with, but if there's any kind of limit on numbers, I think we would have to cancel purely because there's no way to limit numbers in that park. You know, short of putting up fencing at massive costs. I mean, there's no way you could fence off whole park and have sort of doormen, because it's just, the cost would be astronomical. So yeah, obviously, it's going to all still be up in the air to a degree. In terms of costs, most people that we've booked with understand that obviously, if it doesn't go ahead, then they won't get paid. It will obviously be deferred till next year. Obviously, there are some unrefundable costs, obviously, if there's any kind of like venue notices that need to be applied for anything like that. But hopefully, they're going to be at a minimum, because like you say, we don't want to, we don't want to waste money, but at the end of the day, we do have to start booking, because, I mean, in terms of like the bands, and a lot of people are getting booked up now, as soon as the Boris announced the roadmap, people start booking their events. So we do have to sort of get a move on with it, otherwise, we're going to have nothing, nothing left to book ourselves.
Thanks, Anne. I appreciate that. As I say, I'm not trying to be negative, and it's good to say that obviously, we are going to need to spend some money. That's appreciated. But I think it's, it's good to just sort of have it out there, as it were, so we, so we know where we're going and what we're doing. There's not much more. The only final thing was the brochure that was prepared for the castle. I personally, I think you look very professional, look really good. I really do think it had a positive impact, and I think that's been evidenced in the inquiries that you've been receiving so far. So again, for the team involved in it, I think it's a job well done. And that's me done. Be pleased to hear.
Thank you, Andy.
Do I have any more questions from the members, please?
Well, can I just go back to the point, the, I mean, did councillor Moore want to propose that our licensing year for market starts on the 1st of July?
Thanks, Terry. Yeah, I'll be happy to propose that.
Do I have a second, please? Councillor Catherine? Can I have a vote, please?
Yeah, it's carried by a substantial majority. And we'll inform, and she'll be very pleased to hear that.
Any against, please? Okay. Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Okay, moving to agenda 10. Date of the next meeting. The next meeting of Wisbeach Town Council is scheduled for 19th of April 2021. However, the leader of the council would like to suggest that this meeting be cancelled. The next one would be the annual meeting in May 2021. Councillor Miss Hoy would like to make a proposal to cancel.
Yeah, enough to say, again, I'm not massively bothered either way on this. It was just purely because, A, obviously, we haven't had much business tonight, and I think there's not, there's nothing yet on the agenda at all for April. And also, I know that obviously FTC and the County Council won't have any, because obviously, the elections, there's County and PTC and Mayor of Cambridge and Peterborough are being held, obviously, as you all know, on the 6th of May, and Pirda officially starts on the 26th. Now, obviously, there's some debate as to whether that technically applies to us, and whether we can carry on our council business or not, but I always, I know that FTC and County try not to have meetings after, between the 25th of March and the 6th of May, just supposed to be cautious, because I don't think people want, like, for example, if we have the meeting in April, and I don't know, I was to propose something, I wouldn't want people to say, oh, you're only proposing this because you're standing in the elections kind of thing, and open us up to sort of criticism. So I thought this may be safer just to cancel it. And then obviously, if there was something that came up in an emergency, we couldn't do it with, I mean, is it three days' notice? We can have a meeting anyway. Three or four working days' notice. So, but I obviously wanted to ask council, rather than just sort of suggesting we do it, because I didn't want people to say, oh, you know, what's happening, there's something to hide, because it's not that, it's just, I just think, don't want to get criticised for holding a meeting potentially during, you know, Pirda, as they call it.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Liam? Andy Moore, please.
Thank you. You mentioned about Pirda, Sam. I mean, obviously, we have got a by-election for one of our seats on this council, haven't we? So would that have an effect with us on that?
Well, like I say, it all depends, because you're right, I actually completely forgot on the town council by-elections. Thanks for reminding me. But yeah, I think, like I say, it's a matter of dispute, because some people say Pirda doesn't apply to town and parish councils. Some people say, well, actually, it does apply, but you just can't announce new policies, you can just do normal business. Then some people say, well, actually, none of it matters. And it's all, I think it's all a very grey area, and I just think it seems to me better to be safe than sorry, and not have the meeting, so we can't get criticised. Unless we absolutely need to. Obviously, if we absolutely need to, and something comes up, then I think an emergency meeting could be called, but I just, I just think we best are on the side of caution. And that's me. I suppose I am saying it from a bit of a personal view, because obviously, with no disrespect, some people do tend to get a bit more tactless than more than others. So I suppose, yeah, it's a bit of a, maybe more of a personal plea, but like I say, I'm not, I'm not too upset either way if we go ahead or not.
Councillor Moore, come back to this.
Yeah, just want to say thank you for the clarity. And this is not against anything that you said. But I would be interested to hear the clerk's view on it. I mean, I personally don't have an issue with it. There is very little business at the moment, and we can call a meeting at short notice. So I don't personally, but I would be interested to hear the clerk's view on it, if possible, please.
Yeah, happy to have to give a view, chairman. I mean, absolutely right. I mean, as I say, there are mixed views in terms of what Pirda is actually about, and some people do run on the basis of being safe rather than sorry, and are very cautious and almost shut down. I mean, that is not my personal view, because my understanding is that it's about not, Pirda is about not using public funds to potentially seem to be promoting a candidate or a political party at the time of election. It's a communication regulation, but some people almost take clothes down for business. So I think that's potentially an issue that you could have a town council who's also standing in another place for an election that could be effectively getting publicity through this council, but not deliberately, if that makes sense. Also, as councillor Hoy said, I mean, we had had some meetings where we ran right through, I think it was from September to December without having a meeting, and we managed to transact business. I would just make the point, obviously, 23rd of March, the delegated power ceases. So almost anything we would then have to call a meeting for in any respect. And yes, as you also says, if we need a full meeting of the council, that could be called by giving three working days' notice. So if we needed a meeting even next Monday, as long as notice was given tomorrow, that could happen. Hope that helps.
Thank you. Councillor Walworth, please.
Sorry, chair, if you said that before, you cut out, and I didn't hear that. Just before Terry spoke, I was just going to say, I actually agree with Sam. I'd rather err on the side of caution and not have because I'd really like to feed back on the youth participation panel, and I can't necessarily do that under the Pirda rules. So I'd rather not anything be muddied, and the projects that we do be seen in a good positive light, because that's what they're supposed to be seen as, rather than anything to do with politics and other things. So I personally would like to side with Sam on this, and just not have the next one and go straight to the May one.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mickens, please.
Yeah. Regarding the delegated powers, could we not extend loads this evening? If they, if they run out on the 23rd of March, as you said, Terry? I mean, could we not extend them so we get up to whatever the next meeting would be, if we miss the April one?
Yes, I mean, obviously, members have got the option to do that, chairman. Yes.
Councillor Hoy, please.
Well, I'm just thinking, actually, bearing in mind that this runs out on the 6th of May, as you've just mentioned, the coronavirus regulations, maybe we actually say that this is extended for a full and final time until the 6th of May, because then we have mayor making a week or two after that anyway. So I can't imagine there being a decision needed in nine days. So perhaps that's what we're saying.
That's a proposal.
Yeah, so I mean, I propose that we extend it till the 6th of May for a final time, when it officially ends. And we have, and our next meeting will be wherever the mayor making meeting is in May.
21st.
21st.
Can I have a second, please? Can I have a second, please? Councillor Prest? Can I have a vote, please?
Okay, that's carried by a substantial majority. So that's effectively what we're doing, is a cancelling the tw- the nineteenth of April meeting, and extending delegated power on, until, and on, until and including the sixth of May.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you. I think that's the end of the meeting, I believe. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you. Good evening.